If there's anybody here for Panda, it has been withdrawn. We have a letter that kind of identifies that, just to make sure that nobody's, you know, hasn't gotten that memo yet. If everybody else is here for the library, then that is super. Thank you. We've got about another minute or two before we get started.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town council meeting for November 14th, 2016. As always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of our citizens, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda tonight is a proclamation for the National Epilepsy Foundation for the month of November. Might as well entertain a motion and then read it.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. So whereas epilepsy...
I should vote.
Oh, sure. Can we vote? Well, let me read it first and then we'll vote to kind of approve it. So whereas epilepsy is a neurological disorder producing brief disturbances in the normal electrical functions of the brain that temporarily affects a person's consciousness, bodily movements, and/or sensations while creating long-term effects on the lifestyle of individuals with epilepsy. And whereas one in 26 people will develop epilepsy and one in 10 people will have a seizure in their lifetime, epilepsy affects more than 65 million people worldwide. And whereas epilepsy can affect anyone, no matter what their gender, race, age, religion, educational background, or socioeconomic status. And whereas epilepsy is more common than Parkinson's disease, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, and cerebral palsy combined. And whereas while there is no cure for epilepsy, drug therapy, surgery, and other non-pharmacological treatments exist, allowing approximately 80% of individuals with epilepsy to lead a normal life with either no seizures or a significant reduction in seizures. And whereas epilepsy is a complex disorder that requires further research to find a cure and prevention. And whereas the annual observance of epilepsy awareness month advocates for the rights, humane treatment, and appropriate education of all persons with epilepsy while raising awareness with families, professionals, and the general public to better understand this lifelong disorder. I, David R. Grunbach, Mayor of New Milford, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim November 2016 as epilepsy awareness month and call upon all citizens, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of epilepsy through education while ensuring that all individuals with epilepsy lead a full and productive life. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anybody from the Epilepsy Foundation here tonight? Seeing no... Yes? Would you like to come up? Right up to the podium over there. That's okay. Sure enough, that's okay, right there.
My husband has an tractable epilepsy and is actually going into surgery December. He's been missing Christmas. It has been seven years of just craziness. It's much like cancer. It kills more than breast cancer each year, actually. My son, who is five, also has it. It's hard. I've watched my husband forget Christmas, that his son even came down from Georgia this summer. I mean, it's much like Alzheimer's, too. It's very hard thing to live with. And many people have it much worse than we do where they're 30, 40 grandmas a day and cannot function. We have no funding. Now we have awareness. Thank you.
Thank you for helping us do this. Thank you.
Can I just get your name, ma'am? Say your name.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, then we will move on to item three. And thank you, Ms. Blake, for that. Item three, the approval of prior minutes.
So moved.
Okay. I'll let you figure it out. Walt seconded. Is Mr. Bass so moved? Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries. Thank you. Item four on the agenda. So we have three items on the town council. We have three separate committees up for review. Mr. Wargo, entertain a motion with regard to subsection A.
Discussion and possible action on the creation of the town council salary review committee for the purpose of reviewing and making recommendations in consultation with the Personnel Department regarding the salaries of non-union employees of the town of New Milford.
Second. Okay. Just to give a little background on this, you know, we're getting into the season where I'm getting a lot of requests from department heads about salary issues and raises and maybe kind of writing some inequities that might exist. And rather than bringing it to the council piecemeal, I thought it was a good idea to create a subcommittee to evaluate this and ideally address this in the next budget session. But if there's anything that warrants addressing before then, then we could pass it through the subcommittee and discuss it as a council. So I've got Frank Wargo and I was gonna nominate Scott Chamberlain. I was thinking of a subcommittee of four. There's a couple of people that are absent, Mr. Bass, Ms. Francis, if you're interested, or if you want to nominate some of the people that are not here. I don't know if that's punishment or, you know, that's what happens when you don't show.
I think not.
Okay. Is anybody else interested, though?
We'll see about my time commitment.
Yeah, I know, it's significant.
The other one here.
Right. You know, we're creating two other ones as well. Ms. Francis, are you interested?
Well, I don't know.
We don't have to, you know, decide today. We're just talking about getting it started. So I'll entertain a motion to create the subcommittee.
So moved.
Okay. There is a motion already, okay.
I made the motion.
Okay.
I would speak to the motion. I've been on this council for 20 something years and it's always been that the non-union people don't get taken care of long after the budget is passed. We have a pot of money and we set it aside and after the budget is done, then we allocate that money. But there's no rhyme or reason to it. And I think we cheat the employees who are non-union because we don't discuss them. I think one of the things is important that we know what these employees do. And if we discuss them during the budget time and we have recommendation for raises, somebody could speak for them and say, "This is why I'm recommending this raise, because this person does this and does that." And that's important because I think it's important that the council people in the council know what these various jobs are and how important they are to the community. And right now, if they're non-union, they just don't exist. They're just kind of like in the Neverland. And I think they need to get their due. So I'm very happy for this.
Just to speak towards that, I can tell you, there's a sense amongst department heads that, you know, there's almost a taboo about talking about raises during budget season. And I told them, I said, "If it's warranted, if you could justify it, if you could point to other data of what other employees and positions are making, you know, I'll back you up and it's worth having that. But I'd rather have it during the budget discussions than, like Frank had said, you know, kind of piecemeal throughout the course of a year where there really is no discussion about it." So it might be a difficult conversation because people, you know, have a sense during budget season, "Why should they get a raise?" But it goes towards, you know, investing in our employees, which are our greatest asset. And so that's the kind of, you know, genesis for this. Frank, you kind of hit it on the head. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion to create the committee? Yes, Mr. Bass?
I have one question, ma'am. During budget season, most of these increases are put in the fringe line and we've given the mayor the flexibility to hand those out. I mean, is that still kind of what, how we're still looking at it, so to speak, or...
Yeah, I guess there have been some instances where, you know, there were minor increases that were warranted through personnel when they make a recommendation. And so we've done that, but it still feels kind of piecemeal to me. I would rather take these requests from the department heads and filter them through the, through the subcommittee to work with me and work with personnel so that if there's any question, you know, by council members or by the public, is an opportunity to explain it. And, you know, they're warranted. If they're warranted and if, you know, we can justify it, I have no problem saying that, you know, an increase is recommended. And that's really what it boils down to. So, yeah, you know, it can be kind of done through the fringe benefits account, but I tell you, I mean, I get, I'm starting to get multiple requests and, like Frank had said, it feels a little bit arbitrary if I'm just kind of deciding in favor of one and why not another.
Right.
And so having the council's kind of input on it, I think it's just a better way to go.
That works.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right. So we'll create the committee. And, you know, maybe at the next one, we could kind of round it out. But I would nominate, you know, Frank Wargo and Scott Chamberlain to get it started. Is there, could somebody so move that?
I already made the motion.
Okay. Oh, but for Frank and Scott as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, that's not in the motion that you're adding.
Yeah, the motion was just to create the committee. So appointing anybody to it, you know, would be a separate motion.
Do you want to approve the first motion first?
No, well, that's up to your discretion, though, isn't it? To appoint? We created the committee and then fill it.
You want us to vote on ourselves?
But I suppose we are.
That's fine. I'll, we'll figure it out, you know, in the course when we have a little bit more information.
So we'll approve the general motion.
Fair enough. Okay. Has it been voted on already? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Losing control. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Losing, confusing myself. Item B, I'll entertain a motion.
A move for discussion and possible action on the creation of the Hidden Treasures Park Committee. Develop recommendations to follow through on the plan to create a public park on this land. And the note is that it's located at the end of West Street, bordered by the Husatonic on one side and a cove on the other. And the town has owned this 16-acre site since 1977. Plans for the park were previously proposed by Mayor Peitler. That was a while ago. The committee would be seven members with two alternates.
Second. Okay. Discussion. Most people are familiar with this property already. You understand it's kind of lame, dormant for a while. A committee to get something together and frankly, I've walked it numerous times. I don't think it's gonna take that much. I mean, you know, a parking area, cleaning out some of the brush invasive species. We're already putting together a plan to take down the old bleachery building, which has been deemed unsafe and the roof has collapsed. So once we put together a budget and a plan of action and kind of a site plan, we might be able to move on this in the spring in conjunction with Parks and Rec.
And you'll populate it.
This one, yeah, I'll bring to the next town council meeting because that'll include not only council members but members of the community. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And item C.
Discussion and possible action on the creation of the Athletic Field Consolidation Committee. Study and make recommendations regarding a long-term plan to address various athletic fields throughout New Milford on private land and possible consolidation of town-owned property. This committee would be seven members with two alternates.
Second. Okay. Just by way of background, Mr. Bass and I, we've talked about this, you know, numerous times following in the vein of the Turfields Committee and trying to capitalize on that momentum. It's an issue that I know has been concerning a lot of the sports organizations in town. We saw it raised this last year with the Garrick Fields and the possibility that we would lose those. So I know a lot of different options have been discussed and, you know, hopefully a committee could put together some recommendations and evaluate some possibilities. Any further discussion? That's the background. Yes, Mr. Wargo?
I understand Parks and Rec takes care of our parks, our public parks. Do they have any, not control, but do they oversee any of the parks that are not on town property? Like for instance, the Little League Fields or the...
No.
The Bulls?
They do not.
They're privately managed.
Yep. They only, they could only work on, you know, public property because it would be public resources. So, and this will be done in conjunction with Parks and Rec and Public Works as well. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I'll bring it to the next meeting and, you know, people, Mr. Bass, I saw your email, I didn't get a chance to really look at it, and will consider people that are willing to serve. I appreciate it. Item five, appointments to boards and commissions. I'll entertain a motion. What's the mix it up? Mr. Wargo?
You want to do them all together?
Sure.
Yeah.
I move every appoint on the zoning board of appeals, Rosalind H. Gill on the Ethics Commission, Barry Rosenberg on the Commission of the Arts, Lacy Yertova?
Yertova?
I just slaughtered her name. Roads Committee, Gwendolyn...
Geraldine Lukavitz.
Before I volunteer to give the motion.
Geraldine, Geraldine.
Geraldine Lukavitz.
And all for the period of 11/14/2016 to 11/30/2019.
Well, the last ones are buried.
Oh, I thought, I looked at the date on the first one.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to do them separately. That's why I did them all at once.
Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals, 11/14/2016 to 11/30/2019. The Ethics Commission, 11/14/2016 to 11/30/2020. The Commission on the Arts, 11/14/2016 to 11/30/2018. Roads Committee, 11/14/2016 to 4/10/2017.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item six is the Personnel Department. First of all, I'll entertain a motion and then I'll invite Mr., Jesus Greg Belero to discuss. I apologize, Greg.
Mayor, very true.
Yep. So I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. Move for discussion and possible action on the approval of the new collective bargaining agreement for the local 1303-183 of Council 4 AFSMI, AFLCIO, New Milford Town Hall Employees, and local 818-50 of Council 4 AFSMI, AFLCIO, which is New Milford Library Supervisors.
Second. Okay. Mr. Belero, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I bring to you a ratified contract with the AFSMI Union that will incorporate both the Town Hall Employees and the Library Supervisors, which kind of sets the tone for this contract. This contract is riddled with a lot of savings for the town. To start, for a general wage increase for all employees, it'll be a 1% increase year over year for the next three years, which you can see by comparison with this retro as well as the contract year, it's well below the statewide average for both arbitrated contracts and settled contracts across the state, which have been at 2.33 and 2.34 respectively. So the 1% coming in well below the average. Additional costs, it will include an additional $50 towards shoes for appropriate employees for the maintenance team, going from $100 to $150 for the reimbursement of their shoes. We have successfully integrated the Library Union members into this contract, which is gonna save from both the negotiating cost, from a legal cost, as well as just a maintenance cost for each of the contracts. So a big savings there. To assist with the post-employment benefits, we've been able to settle a vacation buyout for all employees. AFSMI contract members right now have to wait a year before they actually receive any vacation time and then they work in arrears. So we're catching up the time that they have in arrears, getting them current. We're doing that over a three or a five-year span, so there's a very minimal impact to our budget. We can also do it by providing them with vacation time on that aspect. So when they retire, there's a much less of a hit to the town budget. Health insurance, they've agreed to go to the Comp Mix Health Insurance Plan, which is similar to the dispatchers as well as police. With the negotiation of the 1% increases, they'll be contributing 6% to their health insurance costs. That's where the balance has been. This is still a savings to the town of over $30,000 year over year. For the pension, we've agreed to actually cap the pension eligibility for the AFSMI employees. Current employees that have 30 or 25 years as of 7/1/17 would cap out at 75% of their earnings. Anyone with less than that after 7/1/17 would cap out at 70% of their earnings. Essentially, that's really the highlight to this contract. It's very, very cost-neutral at the end for the town. Over the life of the contract, it's gonna be an increase to the annual budget of under $1,000.
Yes, Ms. Francis?
Was there, in changing this timeframe on the pension, is there anyone that would have fallen outside of this new parameter?
No. No. The AFSMI employees are multiplied at a 1.6 rate, so they're, this isn't a very, very minimal, if not an anomaly, impact on the contract.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, ma'am. Greg, thank you.
Absolutely.
And your staff. The 1% over the next three years, prior to what was our...
It was 2.25, 2.5, and 2.25.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. Any further questions?
Grahan's is good for three years.
It's good for three years.
No opening until...
Until June 30th, 2019.
And just generally, I think this is the last union contract that we have to negotiate. Is there anything else?
For this year.
For this year.
It's gonna open up next year.
Okay. So, you know, for a little while. Yeah.
It works.
So it has been ratified by the union already. It's on for action tonight as well. We have a motion to approve it. If there's no further discussion, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Greg, for working on this.
Absolutely.
They spent a lot of work, a lot of time. Ken Taylor, who's not here tonight, you know, is very much involved as well. Did a really good job.
It was a great team and actually, you know, the negotiating process was really fair. The AFSMI team did a great job as well, so.
Yeah, they did. I want to thank everybody involved. They did a great job. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right. Item seven on the agenda, Public Works. Intertain a motion and then invite Mr. Zarba up.
Intertain a motion to discuss and possible action on the authorization for the reallocation of $233,862 from the Husatonic Avenue Cash Account Number... Oh, brother. Oh, no, 125. Oh, my God, I missed a number. To the Century Brass demolition account, 4304000053005.
Second.
I should have practiced that.
As, I'll invite Mike Zarba up here, our Public Works Director. Just to give you a little bit of background, though, as you know, we're coming to finally some completion on the Century Brass site. Part of that grant that we got from, I guess this was the EPA or DECD, so it was from the state, the $2.5 million, it had a $500,000 match that the town was required to match. So we're at the point now where we're ready to start thinking about where that $500,000 is gonna come from. And as Mike will explain, we had $233,000 and change in this other account, which is being proposed to be used for this match that we already agreed to when we accepted the grant. Fair enough, Mike?
Summed it up.
Okay. No, I was gonna say, if there's, if there's anything I missed.
Yeah, I think going back in history, if you want to say, back to 2014, when we entered into the agreement with DECD, it was a non-matching, meaning we didn't need to use town money and DECD money at the same time. We could, it was a, you know, there was no restriction on us using just the $2.5 million of DECD. I believe at the time, the philosophy was, since we didn't know what the final bid project was, there was no point allocating funds, town funds, towards our share if they in fact weren't gonna be used. Obviously, once we have a bid and know kind of where the project's going, there's a need to have that, you know, that cash now. And this is, you know, one of the accounts that has been identified, is being able to match or to supply some of those funds for the matching money. It, originally, if you don't recall or if you don't have the history of the Husatonic Avenue project, it was specifically targeted at improvements on Husatonic Ave from Asputucker Road out to Medinstill to supply sewer, water, a pump station, to have that sewer line operational, and to infuse economic development on the Century Brass site. So those were the basics of the original money that was allocated for that project. And that's why we felt it was appropriate to rotate over to this particular project now on Century Brass site.
Thank you, Mike. Any further questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Hey, Mike, just while you're here, Katie had mentioned, did we receive any bricks from the demolition of the building? We were talking about that. I forgot to follow up. I don't know if there's any left.
Specifically, I think we can. I don't think they were gone, so.
Yeah.
Certainly, I'm gonna say some.
We'll grab a couple of bricks and we'll talk about the...
The least contaminated of the...
The bricks are not contaminated, by the way. One of the parts of the building, believe it or not, that was not contaminated.
Right.
So.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
We'll pick out only the ones that are.
Okay. Thanks. Item eight, tax collector. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll stand and debate the motion. Possible action for the November 2016 tax refunds in the amount of $2,113.33.
Second. Any further discussion?
And there's a balance, that leaves a balance of $25,416.
And seven cents.
Well, these big funds, we round up. I'd give you the seven cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine on the agenda, Health Department. I'll entertain a motion and then ask Mr. Kresban to come on up.
Move for discussion and possible action to the request by the Health Department, Michael Kresban, Director of Health, to transfer $13,389 from contingency or an appropriate account as per the Director of Finance for the remaining balance of the invoice for MXI Environmental Services LLC for the disposal of waste collected during the annual Household Waste Collection Day event.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Come on up, Mike. You could explain this better than me.
So the Household Waste Day this year was on September 17th, and it was a grand success. We had four cars. It was second to most cars in the 26-year history of the event, but the most cars we've had from New Milford. But the reason the cost was substantially higher was because the amount of waste collected, you know, the type of waste, was more expensive waste and there was more of it. So it was, it was about 40% more than expected. What we've been doing over the last several years is budgeting based on a three-year average from previous years. And I was way off last year, so we, victim of our success.
What was the majority of it?
Well, we had, I'll list, some of the expensive wastes are consolidated organic liquids, which the most we collected in 26 years, and that was almost 60% more than...
Oil?
You know, I don't know how, what the specific kinds of breakdowns those are. Consolidated organic liquids is probably pesticides and herbicides and that kind of thing.
Oh, oh.
You know, then we had aerosols, you know, probably a whole collection of aerosols. It's an expensive product to dispose of. The quantity of that waste doubled. Alkaline lab pack, not quite sure what that, you know, the way they classify these things, you know, you see them coming in as, you know, cleansers or insecticides or whatever, but the waste company classifies them as, you know, the type of quantity, the quantity of the type of waste that I'm not familiar with. But, but those, there were, there were eight different types of waste that were collected that we broke records on. And, and...
That's good.
Many of those were, were much higher than we've collected in the past. 87% more on some of the solids, 80% more on those alkaline lab packs, 10% more on propane cylinders. So we had a lot of propane cylinders coming. And then, as I mentioned, the consolidated organic liquids was, was 60% more. So the, that all added up to the bill, the total bill was $44,780, and we, we had a balance of $31,382, which was very close to what we've had in the budget in past years to pay for the most expensive item, which is the contractor that disposes of the waste. But, you know, we, I miscalculated on that because of how much more waste came in.
That was a good day. I saw it was busy. Thank you to Suzanne and everybody else that helped manage it. Yes, Mr. Wargo?
Yeah. I'm glad we paid for this because if we don't pay for it, it goes inappropriate, disposed of inappropriately. But a shout out to the citizens of New Milford who take the time to take that hazardous waste and bring it down to have this waste day as opposed to just throw it in the garbage.
Yeah.
And I think that they ought to get a pay. Although we pay for it, it's still good to see that they're... And I think that they ought to get a pay. Although we pay for it, it's still good to see that they're, had good stewardship for this and they care about our town.
Yeah.
And we, and I didn't mention that we have contributing towns, we have participating towns. It's now eight towns that are involved in this. So the, so the income, uh, that we'll receive will be greater as well. So that $13,0398 will be minimized by a little over $5,000 contributions from other, from the other participating towns.
Excellent. Sure, yeah, thank you. It was, it was a good event. It was a big success. Uh, any further discussion? Is all, Mike? Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, item 10 is, well, let me, discussion and possible action on the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $1,000 given by Ms. Carol Heckman of Indianapolis, Indiana, to the town of New Milford in memory of Dr. Peter Orenski. It is requested that this money be used for the purchase of a permanent flag position to honor near the town flagpole to honor Dr. Orenski. Any remaining funds will be used for the purchase, repair, and maintenance of the flags. Second. Or so moved to start.
So moved.
And then a second? Well, somebody's second?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Bear, thank you. I don't think I have to say much about Mr. Orenski. You know, we went to a memorial that was held at the VFW this weekend. Ms. Francis was there. His life just keeps getting more amazing every time I hear about it. It's, there's, there's a different layer to it. And, um, this donation is very generous. Uh, it's certainly something that I know that we could fulfill, um, given Mr. Orenski's contributions to our town, not only from flags, the pins, um, general war, and, and just being a good citizen, being somebody who's really committed to service. So it's a real honor and I certainly would thank Ms., Ms. Heckman for her contribution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And item 11, which seems to be what most people are here tonight for. I'm sorry for the wait, but there's a lot of you, so it's good to get through the other stuff and give you the time. This is the library modernization committee and a presentation by the committee. Do you want to do your presentation first and then we can invite the public up to speak? I think I get a sense that everybody basically is here to support the library. So I appreciate that. As they do in zoning, we can kind of just, you know, acknowledge the support that's here in the, in the room tonight. Looks like there's got to be, I'm terrible, but at least 50 or 60 people, um, wearing the I support the library kind of lapels. So thank you. And Ms. Herman, thank you.
Uh, I'm Joyce Hermanot. I serve on the library board and I'm also co-chair with Joanne Chapin of the Modernization Committee. And I'd like to thank the council for extending our term another six months and for your support. Uh, we're here again tonight to remind you that the New Milford Public Library is unable to continue delivering 21st century services in our outdated buildings. And we want to show you the final result of our feasibility study. We are also reminding you that these are town-owned buildings that have not received an upgrade in almost 40 years. We also are reminding you that you are supposed to be representing all of the people in our town. Of the millions of dollars we spent on a beautiful new high school, state-of-the-art athletic fields, and other terrific projects that are in the pipeline, the library has received exactly $20,000. We think it's time to prioritize the library and support the approximately 13,000 people a month who use it. And I'll emphasize, we've only received $20,000 since we started this project. What was it, 12 years ago, 14 years ago? That's it. So now I'd like to introduce our architects, uh, Jim Lothrup and Bob Gabalski. And they'll be able to show you, uh, the results of this feasibility study that you have funded.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jim Lothrup. If I can present from over here.
Yeah, please, wherever you gotta go.
And maybe I'll turn a little bit so. We're gonna start right off with the best way to kind of understand what we're trying to do. And this is a conceptual rendering of a building addition and renovation to the library. You recognize the original Goodwin House. 1897, uh, building that was built there. What you don't recognize is the piece that's in between. But what it is, is the existing building that's there with an additional floor added on to the top and a, as minimal addition as we could put on the front of the building to provide a new elevator to get us to every floor within the building, which isn't possible now, including to all the floors in the Goodwin House. And we had to do that outside of the existing building construction so as to not get too tangled up in that structure. Okay? So basically, what you're gonna see in the plan now is, uh, I'll move these over. Here's an existing first floor of the library. With again, the Goodwin House there, the 1896 building there, and 1977. Edition that was put on the back. Okay? So. Why don't you put that next to it just so that people can kind of look back and forth if they want and see the difference? So you can see, the Goodwin House stays exactly where it is, basically untouched from the outside. The 1887.
97.
97. Building stays exactly the same as it is on the outside. This building's wonderful for the character of the town and you certainly want to preserve those. The, uh, more modern addition on the back stays essentially exactly where it is now. And we're reusing that as much as we can. But what we're doing is we're creating a new main entrance to the library near where it is now. But we're doing it in, I think, a very helpful way to you in that we're connecting that not to the upper level here where your door is connected to the upper level of this addition. We're bringing it in to the lower level of that addition.
I see what you mean. Cause I was wondering when you have that rendering over there. Now, there's that slope going up. You gotta take away the slope and you'll be coming in right on the bottom level.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm done.
No, no, no. I was gonna ask that question when I saw that, but that's, that's great.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Very simple way that we can put that elevator right on the face of that building. We can get a new stair that connects all the floors, as does that elevator connects all the floors throughout both buildings. With that, we get a new entrance coming in here and that lowers it down to this existing floor level. So that's now a fully ADA compliant, easy to get to entrance, which the existing one is not. It's too steep. It doesn't have landings at the way. So even if you had the muscles to get all the way up there, you probably wouldn't have the muscles to continue the whole trek without a break. So instead of having to bring people with disabilities in the back door, they now can come in the front door. Coming in from that new, uh, roof overhang out in front, a vestibule and then a, a new lobby. We've got the circ desk right there greeting people just as they come in. We've got a circ workroom right behind it. And we're then making the ground floor of the Goodwin House and this, uh, ground lower level of this area will all become the new children's space. So we're.
It'll, it'll, I'm sorry, it'll become?
The new children's area, okay? Right near the front door. No stairs, nothing to deal with, and twice the size of the children's area now. So everything that you really need is there. We're breaking off a separate area of that children's area, as all libraries do today, to have a young adult area. And young adult area is really, you know, starting sometimes at 11, going up to, you know, maybe 16, something like that. But it's usually that, uh, 11 to 14-year-old age level, okay? So they're in their own area, but with staff all around them and appropriately separated, okay? Coming in that lower floor now, instead of the upper level, we come in and go up those stairs right there and that gets us to the existing upper level here, okay? Which connects into that floor. So all of this is a simple flow. We have woefully underserved bathrooms in the building. One may be ADA compliant, but probably not. So we're getting all new public restrooms in here. We've got a receiving area in the back here for staff at the, the back entrance. And the front area that was children's, uh, now becomes, gets restored back to sort of the original grandeur of that original building. And that becomes an adult browsing area. We take out the young adults that are squeezed in a hallway right here and move them over. We're exploring the possibility of just having, not really a cafe, but a little vending area, a space to encourage you to get a cup of coffee, sit and talk with a friend, uh, you know, more mingling, more interaction within the library and encourage you to stay there. Not trying to take away business from anybody in town, it's just coffee and that sort of thing. But, but it's a space just to make it a little more pleasant to be in.
Are you re- are you retaining the original elevator?
We are retaining the original elevator, yes. The problem with that one is it doesn't connect to other floors. So we have a duplication there. And we're, we're saving the stairs as well. So that's our, our main floor. This, uh, is really a sort of an intermediate floor. This is the upper level of the Goodwin House, Goodwin House, excuse me. And this is the upper level of the stacks, okay? What we're doing with that is, remember the new elevator and the stair we put in the front lobby? That comes up and we're gonna bring that up to a floor level that's at the same level as the second floor of the Goodwin House. So that allows us to come up an elevator, come up the stair there and have this whole area accessible and connected. We think that's a perfect location for staff because they're near the front of the building, they're accessible to everybody, but they do have a function that's generally separate from a lot of the public use. There will be meeting rooms in the front of that, uh, but that's just the, um, the existing second floor and a connection right there to get us across to the elevator. So now this upper floor is accessible, which it isn't now. And we get rid of the treacherous stairs that are coming up the front and some other things. So just make it a, a better space to be in. This is the children's level down below, so we'll still have a high ceiling for the children's area, young adults area. Continuing up that stair or that elevator to a new floor that's built right on top of the existing roof. Okay? So it's adding one floor across here. What we're doing is putting the adult collection up there. And again, more bathrooms for the public up on that floor. It, uh, um, is probably going to be fiction over here, probably nonfiction over here. You'll also see, with a little more looking, you'll see that currently the library has really one private meeting room in the whole library. I believe we have eight meeting rooms now of different sizes. Here's two back here. It could be se- separated by a folding partition or it could be one. Here's a very nice one here. It's, uh, again, open in the fiction area. We wanted to not impose any more height on this new building onto the, to existing buildings. So what we've done, we didn't need a full second floor across this whole thing. So we stepped the, the new floor back. And there is a, a flat roof area here, a terrace. But the point of it is really to make sure that we're not really changing the street state from Main Street. So, uh, again, looking at the rendering, you can see that steps back and, uh, doesn't impose a whole nother floor on there. And you can see we've sort of changed the character of that one just a little bit in the rendering. And the design is certainly open for change and modification. But our intent was to say, let's not continue a solid wall all the way up here. Let's step it back. This is gonna be a very lovely space with a wonderful view of the town, so we put a lot more glass on that. We're not trying to make it more modern. We're just trying to make it have a difference in opinion, a different look to it. So that will be an outdoor roof area. So that's basically the plan. It all fits together pretty easily. And, uh.
Beautiful.
Thank you. There's a straight-on elevation of it, but I think the rendering probably gives you a better idea of what it looks like.
Not to throw like kind of a wrench in it, but you know, I just talked to, um, Sally today. We've got some red barns behind. I mean, parking is a big issue for the library. And although there's been some talk about converting where these barns are behind the library now into, you know, some kind of a park area, there's concerns about that. Can additional parking be incorporated into that so that, you know, right now it's, it's very tight back there? If it could kind of extend to where those barns are, um, it might give some additional room for people. All right.
Well, again, this is the existing plan. Here's the existing library, same footprint we're gonna have. So we had left that just the way it is.
Yeah.
This conceptual planning. It didn't seem obvious to us how we could get appreciably more parking without getting more land back there.
Right.
So.
So maybe we could see if, um, if those barns come down, because they're already falling down anyway, it might create kind of an L back there where you might get, you know, 15, 20 other parking spaces.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
Fair enough. And we're leaving the entrance from the back, so it's, uh, you know, it's still sort of the same purpose the one does now.
Excellent. Beautiful, yeah. The only question, do you have this in kind of, um, PowerPoint or electronic format?
Yep.
We could, you know, share it, post it, and you give people the opportunity to view it as well.
We have it. We thought about bringing it tonight. We just thought this was easier.
This is great to see, yeah. You know, you could email it to us or, um, and kind of give it around. Fantastic.
Um, concerning the barns back there, um, where the, uh, old, the big old barn that was exactly the historic barn.
Yeah.
Back there. You could put supports on the lower level and then make a nice level, um.
That's an interesting idea. We'll take a look at it, yeah. Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. First, very good job. How much additional square footage do I put in the second, um, floor? How much additional square footage would that be for the library? Do you remember about off the top of your head? Sure. Uh, without the mezzanine, 7,700 square feet. And the mezzanine inserts, let's move it around a bit. The point is you end up with about 29,000 square feet, or is right, pound, yeah, 22,298. So there's a appreciable increase to serve the young adults, the children's, and provide a meeting room space that's much bigger than the library. And then with the two structures, the two, um, structures that were really, we talked about on each side of the new renovation. Are you doing anything within those two, any kind of retrofitting or anything for energy efficiency with those particular buildings themselves? Or is really gonna be no work done at all to those two structures?
Well, we would hope that ultimately we can, I mentioned, restore the inside of this building. I think in 1977, it was a, an era where history wasn't really appreciated and it was easy to strip everything out and make it like, uh, almost more industrial. And that's sort of what it is now. We'd like to restore it to, to, uh, adult services and.
And is that within the realm of the project cost?
Is that within the realm of the project cost now, or that's...
That's within the numbers, that's right.
That's what we only got your figure.
That's right.
May I interject?
Yes.
Please do. There is money available from the state, from the Historic Commission or something like that. I don't know if it'll be available whenever this project is completed, but they have money available to restore lighting and woodwork and mosaics, and we talked to them about that ten years ago.
State Historic Preservation Office.
That's what it is.
Funny.
Lastly, I know when the library back a long time ago, nineties, I guess was the first one we were looking at, but you were talking in the back of doing almost like a, almost like a bowl, where you'd be able to do like live readings and shows for kids and stuff like that, is that...
Yeah, yeah.
Father's plan.
Yeah, there was going to be a little garden there and some parking.
Is that still something you can think about, or not really?
It'd be very nice if we had the money.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we've thought about that. I've heard concerns from the surrounding business owners that it, there's concerns that it might attract people at night, you know, that could be undesirable, and the library said that as well. I'd love to see that, but from a practical point of view, you need parking, first and foremost. I'd love to see another park.
Well...
You know, but that's been an issue, so if you could find more parking, let's work together and figure out a way to do that, yes.
I have a question for Mr. Lothar. I just want to talk about retrofitting the electrical, HVAC, all of that is included also in the estimate, correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
When you're, if you get this approval and you do this, talk to us a little bit about this, the continuing of the library services, and how will you intermesh the new construction? Do we have to close the library, or will it still be functional while you're doing the addition?
I think the simplest way to keep it in operation while we're renovating it, and we haven't done real exploration, is, and I think the simplest thing is to keep this portion of the building active, because when we add this in front and behind, I think we're really taking that building kind of out of commission. Could we maintain the Goodwin House while that was happening? Possibly, but I think probably the best we could be able to do is have to squeeze us into this building, and that would remain fully functional outside of the construction. I think that's probably the best we could do.
I know East Harbor did a renovation and they were lamenting the fact that they closed the library completely, and they lost patrons. When it reopened, it was just, they lost that continuity that they had, and they wished they had done it like you were going to propose it. Some parts of the library were always open.
I'm not sure if I made it clear, but there is a basement space underneath this that is not really utilized. This plan does envision that elevator going down to that lower floor, it does envision the stair going down right off the lobby to that lower floor, so while we're not really at this point envisioning a whole lot of renovations going on down there, we're saying, well, we're right here, we might as well make that available to be used. And, you know, we can look at ways that would work. We might even say first phase is to renovate the basement of that to give us more space for the temporary library. So there are lots of things we could work out to see the best plan for you.
Ms. Richardson.
If you only kept that one area open, is there access for individuals with disabilities to get into that building? So they, and how long would you be planning on closing the other space for, like, construction time?
I haven't really looked at the schedule for that.
Maybe the timeline.
It's, yeah, we'll develop one.
As it is now, you can come in the back.
Wouldn't that be closed doll?
The back of the old building.
No.
Oh, that's right, it's the new.
Can't, there would be no, no handicap available.
We can take a look at that, it's obviously something we would want to do.
Also, the basement, I think there was an issue with height of the ceilings in some parts of the basement, they weren't high enough for public use, just for the friends.
I'll raise it though.
I think we can, we believe we can make that work.
Yes, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mayor.
Picking back from Councilwoman Frances's question, you talked about, you know, mechanicals, what about IT and will that all be included in the renovation costs? All that to set up.
I would sure expect it should be, yes. Again, this is a conceptual plan, I'm not judging the bed, I'm just saying, we're just getting into this to see, is this something that you want to proceed with and we will fully develop? Answer those questions, I'm sure the design will change, I'm sure we'll improve it continuously as we go along.
I just want to make a comment. I was obviously on this committee along with Joyce and on the last committee along with Joyce, and we saw a lot of architects and a lot of renderings that time, and this is by far the best looking on the outside and the most space on the inside, plus meeting rooms and adding another elevator. I never thought it would ever be able to be done, and it's amazing what you have shown here. I think that's...
Yes, Mr. Barr.
Speaking as an individual, or maybe even speaking for the town council, we constantly talk about jewels of the community. We spent, what, six-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand dollars for the renovation of Lindemere Park. We just are organizing a committee now for Hidden Park. We just spent four million dollars on turf fields. This works for me, it's long overdue.
But it's my floor.
It's your floor, the second floor is his floor. I'd just like to say one more thing, that the next step is the schematic design phase, and the architects can tell you what that encompasses if you're interested. That cost is a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, and that's what we need from you to go forward at this point. I don't know if you're interested in knowing what that phase encompasses or not. You probably already know, Pete.
This is a conceptual design, as I mentioned, referred from the library board, some of the comments on the needs for the library, but we want to now more fully develop this, to take into consideration any feedback that we get, to delve into it with more engineering input. We've got enough to know that it's constructable, we're not making up something here, but we want to kind of fully flush out both the plan and the building itself. So that's, it's not construction documents, it's just fully making sure that this is the basic floor plan that you want to build, making sure that the exterior elevation is the look that the library is most appropriate for the town.
Is that your company, or is that another company that involves like an RFP, or, you know, like, who does that?
We would hope to do it.
Oh, okay, I just wanted, you know, at some point, I know they've mentioned an RFP would have to go out, I imagine that would be for architects and, you know, for more for construction plans.
I think we would, in a way, to...
That's how we found it.
That's how we found it. We interviewed quite a few. Quite a few, yeah.
Okay, yes, Mr. Barr.
Doesn't the Board of Trustees have a contingency fund of one-point-five-million dollars?
Depends on the market value at the time, but right now, yes, we have about a million dollars.
Okay. Maybe I'm off-base. It would seem perhaps prudent to me if, instead of asking this committee or a town council for a hundred-and-sixty thousand, that you take it out of that, one-point-five-million that you have. Hundred-and-sixty thousand, I think, is relatively a small number, and that could come from that fund you have. A thought?
No.
Okay.
No, because that means the town hasn't made any kind of commitment other than a verbal one, and we've gone through all of those verbal commitments ten years ago, twelve years ago, and there were lots of promises, but nothing materialized. So no, I think that the town should be responsible for this. That way they'll show a commitment to us.
At our last meeting, remember, I, that's what we discussed, that we didn't do this at the prior meeting, we put it here so everybody could think about it, they could have this beautiful presentation, and then the council would make a commitment, as Joyce just said, took their money where the mouth is, because as you said, everybody thinks it's a jewel.
And Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mayor. How much is the, how much is the...
The next phase?
The next phase, a hundred-and-sixty...
A hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, if you want to round it out to one-sixty-three.
I'll make a motion for a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars to come out of contingency or any other account that Board of Finance, I mean, the...
Hold on for a second.
Director of Finance.
It's not on for action tonight, and this is an important discussion. I appreciate everybody that's here, but we do have to figure out, it's easy to say, just pay a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. It's a lot more difficult to say, where is that money going to come from? It's not budgeted, so I would prefer to proceed a little bit more cautiously. Talk to the Library Board of Trustees, talk to our finance department, and find out where this money's going to come from. Like, I'd still, two, one second. You know, the easy thing would be to say, everybody, you get your a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars, but that's not the responsible thing for me to say if I don't know where that money's going to come from. And when I talked to Sally this afternoon, I said, I think the town and the town council is going to support this, so you're talking about a seven-million-dollar project, and the town council will support it. And I said, give the town council what it needs to support it. We gave you the, what was this, twenty-thousand dollars to get to this point, right? And I said, get us to the next phase. I said, these pictures and these schematics are going to help us convince the town, because it's not just the people in this room, but it's the entire town that has to get behind this and vote for a seven-million-dollar bond package. Help us do that by taking it to the next step now and allowing us to campaign for this. We saw what happened when, you know, a campaign fails, and that's why Panda's not on the agenda tonight. Give us the chance to perform a successful campaign, and then during this budget season, we put it out to referendum for the town to vote on, and I am confident with the support, bipartisan support of both, all the members of the town council, that it will pass, but there's got to be a process. You know, are you coming here tonight asking for a hundred, for a commitment from a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars? It's the first many people I've heard about that, and I'm not confident that I've even addressed where the money comes from.
Well, I think that in...
Yeah, Ms. Frances.
As stated before, and we all noticed, that the library is a town-owned building, and maintenance and repairs continually are done by the trustees. Okay, fine, twenty-thousand dollars in the last whatever years. We just moved several hundred-thousand dollars from one account to another, and the whole point of saying that everybody will be behind it, we've said that before, as a council, we've heard this before.
Well, not me, but, you know, on the councils.
Right, obviously, not you. But the, but the fact remains that if, if the council isn't as representatives, we're representing the taxpayers, the residents who voted in, if we're not willing to say, yeah, we can find a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars to show the good faith to move forward to the next step, I, I certainly understand why Joyce is reticent on this, and I'm going to feel the same way. It's just déjà vu all over again for us, because if that's spent, all that means is, well, we'll never do this again, but it just means another hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars towards something that this body is not willing to stand up for, and it's...
Let me say something to that then, Katie. I understand where you're coming from. There was no request to ask for a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars tonight, and that's where my kind of problem, why don't we put it on the next town council agenda? Let me kind of touch base with my finance department, figure out where this money is going to come from, coordinate with the rest of the town council members. I have no doubt that we're going to find a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars from somewhere. I don't, I appreciate everybody that's coming out tonight. This is going forward, this is happening. I'm uncomfortable with, you know, you could have sent me an email saying, it's not just a presentation, but we're asking for, you know, an appropriation, and I support that, but like I said, I have to go back tomorrow, everybody else goes wherever they're going to go, I have to figure out where it comes from at the end of the day.
Well, I think that in the town, you showed me what is the town charter when we had a town meeting, that waste management funds were supposed to be used for educational purposes, the library, and something else, I can't remember what it was.
Parks and open spaces.
Open spaces.
And tax relief.
So far, we've only received twenty-thousand dollars from that fund, and everybody else seems to be taking from it, you approved money for...
Well, we also just paid for the elevators also, right?
Yeah. But you've also approved money for other, lots of other things that cost a whole lot more than a library request.
I'm not being confrontational with you, I'm not being adversarial, I'm just saying, I want to find this money, it's just not even on the agenda tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
This was a presentation, I support it. I'm saying, I will find a way to move forward with this that the community supports, not just, and I appreciate everybody that's in this room, but didn't this go to referendum in the past and get voted down?
No, it's never gone.
It never even went to referendum. So I, I'm building towards, I mean, a bond package that involves, you know, five to seven million dollars, I want it to succeed, you know, I want to get to the next phase, and I want to move forward, you know, expeditiously, but I want to do so with some kind of a plan.
Can't you, you have the authority to appropriate some of the waste management funds?
No, the town council does, you know? So that's where, I don't have the authority to appropriate any funds from waste management.
I was just thinking that I thought you had done that on your, no, I don't mean you personally.
The town council had done that, yeah. And if you want to do it tonight, you know, I'm, we could put it on, add it, if you want to designate it from town council, I mean, from waste management, as opposed to contingency, contingency stuff, I mean, that's our contingency. This isn't really a contingency, you know?
So let's do it the legal and proper way, but we have your absolute, in front of everybody here, we have your, listen, we've had through this before.
Let me do this then, let's, let's make the motion from waste management. When you start going into contingency, contingency is for something that's unexpected. We get a snowstorm, a bridge collapses, you know, we run out of sand, that's our contingency fund, to pull this out of that makes me nervous, you know what I mean? But if you say, let's do waste management, we certainly have a significant budget, you know, or a significant balance in that for a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. Yes, Mr. Bass, and then Mr. Worgum.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I change my motion with the approval of my second, question to town attorney, would this appropriation for this said use of a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, does that meet, in your opinion, the guidelines for using waste management funds?
Quickly, I would want some time to look at that, but it is generally consistent with the opinion we just issued relative to the town contribution of half of the expense of updating the controls on the elevator, which I don't think you mentioned earlier, but that was recently addressed by this town council. I would, Councilman, remind you that this, because it's not on the agenda presently, you would need to have a two-thirds vote to add it to tonight's agenda, which would, I think, because you have five, you'd have, you'd need four votes of your town council presently, and in addition, just one more thing to keep in mind, if you wanted to try to seek a supplemental appropriation vote, you need a majority of the entire town council to do that, so you need a five, you would need to be unanimous in voting for supplemental appropriation. That's if you wanted to add it tonight.
Fair enough. Yes, Mr. Worgum.
We've waited twenty years for this, two weeks is not going to make a difference. And I think if we're going to sell this to the town, the town council has to be unanimous on going forward, and we're not unanimous, I see a lot of empty seats. That's not a good way to start this campaign. So in two weeks, we make sure everybody's here, and we're on television, and all nine people say we support this, and you don't have that now, and I don't, I don't think that's a good way to start this.
Mr. Barr.
If I vote twice now, I'll be sick. I'm with, I'm with Councilman Bass.
I hear you.
I'll vote twice, two hands.
So it's up to you guys. Is there a motion? Uh, is there a motion, number one, to add it to the agenda? And then, uh, there would be prior, a motion, um, I'm sorry, uh, what was the, what was the progress?
It would have to be a, a motion to add it to the agenda. For purposes of acting on, uh, Councilor Bass's motion, and that would have to pass by two-thirds.
Right.
Because it's not on the agenda, two-thirds of those present. But once it's then voted on, it would have to be unanimous, because it would be a supplemental appropriation. Uh, even if it came from whether it's, uh, the Landfill Southern Fund,
Yeah.
or contingency. Um, I myself, I, I, in the past, when any money had come from the Landfill Southern Funds, we've had a chance to at least look at some written proposal and, and at least think about it and issue an opinion, which I haven't done.
So, uh, we've given, well, given Mr. Worgo's, you know, concerns, I understand where everybody's coming from here tonight. But, so, do you want to, do you want to push the motion, or do you want to push it off for two weeks? Yes, Mr. Bass.
Um, is it two-thirds of the members seated, or is it two-thirds of the entire council?
For which one?
Our town council rules, the ones we've adopted as a rule, rule-making body back beginning of, in December, no such item, a non-agenda item, so presented will be acted upon at the meeting, uh, it is presented to unless two-thirds of the members present vote to consider action.
But was there, if you knew you could do this, and all these people were here, why didn't you just ask me to put it on? I would have put it on for action, you know?
Well, to the last meeting, we did say that we were going to bring it forward for action at this meeting.
Right, but not an amount, you know, yeah. I'd be happy to kind of, you know, consider.
We have enough people, we had two-thirds vote to add to the agenda to move this for the next meeting, is that correct?
Sure.
John? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, you know, so it would go on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'll support a motion to the next meeting, but I don't support funding.
All right, but we got a motion on the floor right now.
So you're not going to support, if we did it tonight, you mean?
I will support tonight.
All right, well, then that would, so then it wouldn't work. Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion, but ask the mayor, which he already said he's going to do, to make sure it's on the next agenda for the next town council for, for a vote.
And also, it's significant, this is a big deal, seven million dollars, but it's right in the heart of town. And the people who aren't here might want to voice their vote, and we let them out. They didn't have a chance to join in.
Well, we didn't let them out, they chose not to be here.
Yeah, but we weren't going to vote on it, it wasn't on the agenda to vote on the money.
The Mayor, Town Attorney here.
Oh, Mr. Tower, yeah, Attorney Tower.
This is small, quick thought, um, this is in connection with the next phase of architectural work. Uh, I understand a great deal of work has gone in by this committee to work with the architects to bring us to this point. I have not, uh, to my knowledge, seen any documentation about that next phase. For example, is it a fixed price for this next phase? Is it a locked-in number? And you might, as a council member, you might want to see that in writing, exactly what this firm is going to provide for that scope of work, and is it, is again, is it, is it an estimate, or is it a fixed price for that scope?
Do you have an agreement for the next, um, phase, or?
We will.
Some kind of form?
We'll partner that with the library.
Sure, okay. So get the agreement squared away, the price, you know, what the scope of it is going to include, so that there's no issues down the road, that you were going to do X, but we thought you were going to do Y, and, um, you know, let's get it squared away. Fair enough?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bass, Mr. Worgo.
What John said, I'm listening, Kevin, I'm just saying, wait a minute, um, was this in the original bid proposal?
The second phase?
The second phase?
The second phase?
Yes.
So it doesn't have to go off the bid?
No, no. It's all, it's all done. We're, we've, we've got the next phase, after that is design development and construction costs, so we know those prices are written.
Let's just confirm the scope, and that's, you know, because that, that leads to issues down the road. I'm sure you guys just want to make sure there's no issues with that, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Well, a hundred and sixty-two, seven hundred. And ten cents.
Were you going to be asking for a contingency on that, or is that like a firm number? Sixty-two thousand, seven hundred, okay. Uh, Mr. Bear.
Just from my own curiosity, are, are you satisfied with putting this on the agenda?
Yes, I might not be here, but somebody will be.
Sally, are you satisfied, satisfied with this? No, misunderstanding, I'm not opposed to this at all, this should have been done a long time ago, when you have, Joanne?
Yeah.
It ought to work for me then.
Fair enough, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Um, you know, we do have public comment, as last, item thirteen has been withdrawn. If people do want to speak towards this, um, you do have the opportunity to. But, you know, we do recognize the support that you've shown the library, you've heard the discussions regarding it. So it's, uh, it's available, it's, it's up to you.
Michael Barnes, did, uh,
Thank you, Walter, Mr. Mayor. I don't have comments specific to the library, so I would like to defer to anyone who would like to speak to the wonderful library of Hopefield.
Fair enough. Okay, I, I have a Michael Miltonberg, but he's from Kent.
He's just, sure.
Come on down.
I don't think there's any, um, you know, restriction.
Now, not addressing the library particularly, is that okay?
That's, that's, this is open public comment right now, if, if there is anybody from, but that's fine. If, if there's anybody from the library, I would kind of give them priority, since I know they've been waiting to discuss this issue.
I agree.
But maybe not.
Any comments about the library? Before you, James, Tom.
Thank you.
Sure. And thank you for hearing me, especially as I'm not a specific New Milford resident, but I am a stakeholder here in the area. I didn't want to put a pin through my sweater, yeah. Michael Miltonberg, you know.
Oh, oh, did you say it, sorry.
Uh, but I do want to say I support the library, this library and all libraries. Just waiting for a little bit of the commotion to die down, since I'm not allowed to speak. Um, I wanted to comment on the issue that, I guess, was killed last night, the power project. And I don't want to spend most of my time speaking about the project, but about the process. Uh, I read your statement, Mayor, which said that the, you mentioned a poisoning of the political process. And I really was saddened to read of threats to yourself and to staff and language like that. Uh, I got a little hot over this, and I used the bold word, "what's on", and I regret that, but threats are, are out of line. But I only, I mean, this process really took a month in the public. The first article I saw was in the Spectrum, October twelfth, dated October twelfth. And I've only dipped into it from a few articles in the press and going to one informational meeting, so I feel like I've seen it by flashes. And yet, it's been stunning. This is the first time I've spoken at this town hall, and it's sad to see us, us talking about a poisoned political process. So I really thought we should do a quick postmortem, I may as well be the one to do it, and give some feedback about what I see as a, a huge lack of perspective. Here's what I'd say, besides in that letter talking about the poisoning, um, you want to make sure the opposition didn't feel that its government is not listening, which would be a valid point, but that's what I want to address. Uh, you said your job is to just give the facts, and you said that there were four informational sessions with questions asked and answered. And what I saw is that that was, that the reality was not that. I saw that in the very first article, which I have here, you seemed to launch things by saying that, uh, this is probably the biggest thing to come to New Milford since Kimberly Clark. Which I, I took as a, as a statement in support of this plant. Maybe you were talking about the tax revenue, I don't know. I do want to make an aside, um, this is Kimberly Clark's press release from two thousand eight, where they talk about the fact that this, this is clean, sustainable energy coming to the area. Let me explain, if people don't get it, and this is why I think there might be a lack of perspective and a disconnect, and why thousands of people signed a petition overnight, essentially, in opposition to this, about why people don't want a gas unit. You're either a little bit pregnant, or you're pregnant, and you're either sustainable, or you use carbon. You burn forests and dinosaurs from billions of years ago. So they're two bad things, it's destroying the planet, but mostly, it's going to run out. You can debate about whether it's a hundred years, or fifty years, or a thousand years, it's not sustainable. It's also not sustainable in terms of what it's doing to us now. So there are truly renewable energies, sustainable processes, and they're not. If you burn carbon, anything in the cleanest ways possible, it's not sustainable. I've seen Kimberly Clark's kiosk on the, the square here for two summers running, and they have that same statement. And it's really what we call greenwashing. So I think if people think, if they buy into the carbon industry's incredible marketing, that gas is clean burning gas, that's just a marketing term. There's no dirty gas, it's like the fantastic marketing term from De Beers Diamonds, a diamond is forever. It's considered the greatest marketing slogan ever invented. I think the greatest one is clean burning natural gas, no such thing. So, within recent years, eighty-five percent of the entire public consider themselves environmentalists. And that includes all the states that are coal states and fracking states. So I, I think it behooves the council to know this and know why we didn't need a gas plant. I heard about this, and I wondered, did someone like put a dome over New Milford and cut off all of our energy? We suddenly had to become not a town, not a nonprofit, but an energy producer? We didn't, and we don't need to do it with a gas plant. There seems to be this mindset that it's a brown field, so we have to do something dirty with it, a gas plant. I learned in kindergarten that two wrongs don't make a right. I just read this week that they closed McSorley's Bar, the old bar in New York, because of, of rats there. If they tell me next week that half the rats are gone, there are only half the rat stuffed in my food and my beer there, I'm not going to go. We don't need and we don't want a gas plant, we don't, the town's not broke, and we didn't desperately need the revenue. So, here's what really got me. I went to one informational meeting, and I heard a council member telling Boy Scouts there, this is the American way to talk things over. This is what really got to people, that it was negotiated beforehand, that it seemed like there was a cheering committee in favor of this, in many other statements that I could read, that in all these meetings, Panda got ninety minutes to say their piece. Where was the opposition? You could say that questions were asked and answered, they weren't. Panda had prepared slides that I'll bet they've shown in town after town already, that where the questions were generalized. Then, when our economic developer, who's also a cheerleader for this project, read questions from the public, he didn't read the questions. He said, here's another one, and he generalized it. I've been to town meetings where the opposition gets its say, and there are two lines, people speak pro and people speak con. I've been to town meetings where they hold a forum, they announce it beforehand, I've made flyers for it.
Mike, you have another minute, please?
Okay, this is why people were incensed. If you had held informational meetings and let whoever, let's, some of the thousand opposition, not what you called a vocal minority, and other reason people were so opposed to this, feel like, think that the fix was in. If you'd let whoever, NRDC, Sierra Club, Joe Glow, come up and have his ninety minutes, people wouldn't have been so incensed. I really believe the council needs to rethink how they approach things and know why. What you called a small minority, which also was an insult, turned out in one week, over a thousand signatures in opposition to this. If you want to do something with that ground field and you want to generate energy, put in thirteen acres of solar panels, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jeff Ferguson?
Hi, Jeff Ferguson, fourteen White Swan Drive. I'm here for a couple reasons, I don't know if you guys know me or not. I've been in the town of Milford for thirty-eight years now, uh, fifteen years for the Pratt Center as the program director. I worked with the youth agency sites, uh, manager, and I've taught for twenty-two years at Scotty Cove Middle School. So I'm invested in this town, and I love the families and the kids in this town, and we'll get to some of the others' issues at some point. I do want to, at some point, talk a little bit about the, the way we've been communicating to each other on this issue, but I'll wait for a second. I did want to show you guys that there are some consequences to inviting the opportunities that the state provided to try to set the groundwork for the power plant that might have come. This unfortunately is Paul Altermet and Ann Altermet's pond, I happen to live on the pond too. This is what's happened in the last week to the property. I just want you guys to see that things are happening, whether you're aware of it or not. That the power line, that I'm not sure if it's supposed to go to Rocky River or come from Rocky River, but they're upgrading the power lines. When I tried to speak to the state, which I haven't been able to get to, I did talk to the Inland Wetlands Commissioner in town to try to find out what is happening, how big will those power lines be, and why are they there? Because if there's not going to be a power plant there, I understand that Rocky River produces electricity. And the power lines that are, you can see in the picture, well, they provide the transmission for that electricity. Now, if there was an assumption that a larger plant was going to come in, and that there was a possible need to upgrade the power lines, okay, maybe that's what happened.
I can tell you, sir, that's not, I think EverSource has been planning this for a while.
In two thousand and fourteen, you guys made an approach to the, the state, correct? To talk about trying to make that site attractive to possibly something like a power plant. That's what I heard from the economic development person that you have, he said that.
Two thousand and fourteen?
No, it was two thousand and fourteen, I don't know, but he said he went to the state.
It was just the past couple of months.
Okay.
Yeah, so, these plans, I can tell you, EverSource has been planning on doing this regardless of Panda, they, they came in previous days.
So do any of you guys know, here, is that electricity going to Rocky River? Or, I, I, I get the impression they said they were upgrading the lines because of the Dover power plant that's going in.
That's my impression as well.
Why does it have to go to Rocky River?
It's the distribution side, that's why.
So it's going to go there and then where?
Well, it, whatever the distribution is now, Rocky River just makes, makes power during the day. At night, it's using power, it's pumping water up into the lake. During the day, distributes that power, so that, that trains, that, that switchyard is to switch the power out from the power it's making to the general grid.
Sure, but why would it have, why would you have to set up, my, again, my question is, why do you have to increase the load going in? Or even out, because you're not producing any more electricity?
I don't know which one is going, right?
No, but you understand that has something to do with this, because they didn't have to do this. It's possible that they didn't have to destroy that part of the property, and they, I want to tell you, they were at it Veterans Day at seven fifteen in the morning, which as far as I know, they're not supposed to do.
I believe it's with regard to what's going on over in Dover and New York, and
I know, but still.
They just gave me a heads up and saying, we're doing this.
Well, I'm giving you a heads up, that this is happening in my backyard, and several other peoples too, and it is of concern.
I'm happy to coordinate with EverSource to address that.
Well, I'm trying to get ahold of Wetlands there, because it's their deal,
Yeah.
to see what's going on, because they haven't remedied anything.
I'm happy to follow up, anything that they're kind of going outside the bounds, what they should be doing, and this kind of tiered, this is nothing that, I think that, they just talked about clearing, so.
As far as I know, the permit was to use an existing road, and they were going to expand the existing road. The expanding the road is act, the existing road is at the bottom of that whole place.
Yeah.
So what they've done is destroy the whole mountain side.
Which, uh, what's the address of this, I just want to write on the back?
I'm on fourteen White Swan Drive, uh, Ann Altermet's at the end of the pond, David Lawson is nine Dexter Labor, so.
Okay.
We're all there, you know, and, uh,
No, that's fair enough.
I don't know anybody else that's spoken about it, but, uh,
No, this is the first I've seen this, but.
If anybody's property value has been devalued, it's mine.
Well, follow up with EverSource tomorrow, and make sure that they get back to you, what you're naming against, I'm sorry.
I think they've already been, I think that, for one thing, I appreciate that you do that, I'm Jeff Ferguson or James Ferguson, probably legally on the,
James.
The paperwork. I do believe that the, uh, through our inland wetlands, the wetlands guys up there, or somebody was going to contact the state, and they were going to bring somebody, EverSource was going to bring somebody in to take a look at what was going on.
Okay.
Just so that they were aware. Now, just so happens, just so you know, all their heavy equipment was taken out this evening.
Okay.
Interesting, we'll see what happens as a result of that.
Well, I'll touch basically with Wetlands, I had heard that, I'll get a report from them, and find out what the situation is with regard to, uh, whether they're operating outside the permit or, or what they were supposed to be doing.
And if you guys could find out how large it's going to be, if it's going to be some honkin' huge metallic structure, I'm out.
Okay.
If I, I can even sell my property, I'm out, because that's ridiculous.
We'll miss it with like a tree.
Right, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, we have a tree there. Can I just, do I have one minute, more minute? Can I say one more thing? I do want to address the general tenor of what's been going on here. Um, obviously, I did have some concerns about the health issues related to the plant coming in. You know, we all love this town, I love this town, there's many people before me and after me who have loved this town. But we have to keep ourselves, we, you know, and there will always, I think we all know, there are people out there who are just going to be hot-headed and say the wrong thing, we know that. Putting things in the paper. Putting things in the paper, you know, mentioning some of the things that were mentioned in tonight's article, they're not necessary, they're inflammatory.
I disagree. Somebody calls my assistant a bitch, I call that person out on it.
You didn't, you called all of us out on it. You didn't call that person, you called everybody who was against that.
I said the opposition, I respect their opposition and their opinion, I respect that. I said the minority that did that acted irresponsibly and I will not condone it.
Well, you left one little sentence in for that part, which is really my. I agree with you. Do you think any of us can condone that? Do you think one of us feels that way? Then don't broadcast that, do not broadcast the negative to everybody. We all care and we all do not approve of any of that, let me tell you that. And you got a lot of people that are not happy with this.
Good. I appreciate that you will not, that you do not support that kind of behavior.
Of course, and you know, I felt bad about it too. When I heard those people talking, it made me cringe.
Good, that's what I want.
Of course, good, it is good.
That is good.
Yes, but what is not good is, here's what you said.
Yes.
I know that you do not represent the people in my town, or even the opposition.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm not even part of this town? I'm not even the opposition, I'm a member of this town, I am not the opposition.
What exactly do you, do you object to?
I'm reading right out of the paper what you quoted.
What do you object to from my letter?
I know that you do not represent the people in my town, or even the opposition. I am my town.
To those that shot down. Honest questions and answers, called my female staff bitch and liar, accused me of being a Nazi and generally behaved without civility and decorum. I know that you do not represent the people in my town, or even the opposition. I know that the opposition was more than that, and that's what I'm saying.
I am the people in your town, Dave, I'm not the opposition.
Point of information, there shouldn't be a separation between the town and the opposition, is what I think he's trying to say. That's the perspective I was talking about.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree with you.
But you put this in paper.
We withdrew it, I agree.
I know, but don't, you see, we could really go a long ways to making this a lot better if we just let this go and we don't drop all this, because people are gonna read this tomorrow. I got this from my son, he's a Columbia Law student. He said, Dad, you gotta see this. I didn't even know that the whole deal was off. He was kinda like going, why would anybody write something like that?
What would be your suggestions? That I not call out the people that acted in that, in that way?
No, no, yeah, I would say, call them out, if you know who they are, you go talk to them. Do not call out a group of people that are part of the same paragraph. Paragraphs usually imply there's a group relationship there, in a paragraph. I would not put the two together at all. I would certainly, and you know what I've learned? The best thing to do when there's somebody that you, who is not doing the right thing, you talk to them. Do not broadcast the whole group. You talk to those individuals and you tell them what's wrong. I see this over and over again in management. Do not cluster everybody together. It only makes things worse, that's what I'm saying.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Ferguson?
I'm sorry.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Steve Looney, please.
Good evening, folks, my name is Steve Looney. I live with fifty-five Fordice Road in Milford. And hearing what's going on tonight, I will put my hand up as one of the people, or one of the first people to talk down Mr. Beetlemyer during the first informational session. I, however, was never derogatory to any member of the board. I was never disrespectful to the young lady that was inside the front door. I never spoke to her. I, like this gentleman, take offense to the fact that we were all, no offense, lumped into the same paragraphs. I didn't go there with a predetermined mindset. I had gone to the EDC meeting, I didn't make the town council meeting on the short notice. And honestly, a lot of the questions that were being asked of the gentleman for Panda were generalized questions that had been asked here by Jeffrey and some other people during the EDC meeting. I realize that not everybody at the informational meeting was at the EDC meeting, so for that, I do apologize. However, the majority of people went there to get specific information, which unfortunately, at this time during this process, just simply was not available. I will stand here and I will commend the mayor for backing out or negating either the offer or the approach by Panda, because I think he is doing what is best for the town. I think he is. I hope in the same spirit, he continue, or you continue to move forward with that property, with the ideas that the people of the town who were so opposed with the no Pandas, the parents opposing Panda brought up. We've had similar conversations with JPS. When JPS was going to be kept, people talked about a town pool. People talk about sports field. We know we own very few sports fields. We talk about how great we treat our kids, how great we do this, how great we do that. If Nestle decided to not let us use their field, we got nothing over there. If Kimberly Clark didn't allow us to use their field, we got nothing over there. We got very little town-owned sports recreational spaces in town. I mean, we realistically do. Me personally, I like that there's a lot of conversation tonight, even for Parks and Rec, for a little committee, a little commission. I think for the brass mill property, I feel that it may be, this is just me, one out of thirty thousand, that a committee should be brought together for conversation, not binding, not anything, but to talk about what the townspeople want to do with that piece of property. It's clear we don't want a power plant. It's clear from the neighbors, they don't want tractor trailers in and out of there all hours of the night, so on and so forth. So let's try and be proactive while trying to market that piece of property so that we can tell people who come to us, we know you'll get away with this, but you won't get away with this. We don't mind you doing this, but you can't do that. The other issue that concerned me is, I go to zoning meetings, I try to go to more meetings now, just just because I want to inform myself, and these meetings I think are great. There was conversation about zoning, where our regulations fall. The reality was, if we made a vote and it went to the state, we have really no say. I think that as a township, for our acreage, I think we could put forward a platform to people who are coming here as to what would be acceptable and what wouldn't be. Why should we be deferring to the state for the state to throw something back on us? I think zoning does a very good job. We see that with the Goodwill Building and some other buildings going down Route Seven, where they try to make it more New England, more country, and I like that. We have a lot of empty stores, we need to do something about that. But I think the town needs to come together behind one issue. Maybe it's JPS, maybe it's the brass mill. But I think we need something to kind of get everybody on the same page. And I think promoting the youth of our town, giving them amenities. We talked about moving GPW down there, moving the portable fuel station down there. I think there's a lot that can be done, and if we still wanna throw thirteen acres of solar panels up on the hill, why not? But I do, again, I do talk at the council a lot. I'm never usually the most positive person towards the conversations I have, and I get it, but this is who I am. But I do applaud the mayor for pulling the Panda project.
Just to address that, Mr. Looney, I will be putting forth some kind of a committee. There are a lot of suggestions for this site, and a committee would probably be in a good position to, you know, be informed for them, weigh them, and communicate them, so I appreciate that.
I get that, and I do appreciate it, but I do want, I do want for everybody to work forward. A lot of people have always talked about committees. And again, I think we're all on a positive way, you have said in the past, and you know, you know, you form a committee to come up with a decision that you've already predetermined. Why, let's not do that. Just let's get everybody together so that we can actually figure out what's best for the town. I'm not a registered Republican, I'm not a registered Democrat, I don't care. I live in New Milford, I'm not an American citizen, I'm an Irish citizen, but I love New Milford. So let's do something that's good for New Milford. Instead of just bickering back and forth that this is good, this is good, but I do appreciate what the mayor has done.
Fair enough, thank you.
Ken? Ken Martin? Monty Robinson?
Hold it, can you get me on there at the bottom of the picture?
I'll be brief. We've been at a crossroads in this town for a month. I commend the mayor for his decision today. It was the right decision, there was nothing good about this plant, nothing. But now, we're still at a crossroads. We can really say something about this town, not just the gateway to the, to the Litchfield Hills, but a gateway to a future for the earth. So today, the earth thanks the mayor for not polluting with the carbon dioxide. And I'm glad he made that decision. But we can do so much more. We can advertise ourself as a place that cares about the future of our children, that they can come here and get involved in sustainable green activities and education. And the brass mill site is only limited by our imaginations. It had to be cleaned up to do anything with it, that's in progress. Let's make this a town that will attract thinking, caring people, that care about the future of our earth. We also gotta stop our partisan bickering. Climate change is real, it's happening, it's gonna get all of us. Let's work as New Milfordites and make this a kind of town that people wanna visit and stay in and move to. Thank you.
Michael?
My comments have to do with the process of approving the expenditure of funds in this town. First, I'll address the absurdity of a white paper stating that the deposit of money into a fund is an appropriation when all of the English-speaking accounting world knows that taking a specific money out of a fund is an appropriation. State of Connecticut Office of the State Controller, Definitions, Connecticut General Statutes four dash sixty-nine. Appropriation means an authorization by the General Assembly to make expenditures and incur liabilities for specific purposes. This white paper states, no supplemental appropriation is necessary to spend landfill settlement funds, but in the opinion of Town Attorney John Tower on October twenty-first, it's defined as a supplemental appropriation, right in the letter he sent. Frankly, it greatly concerns this member of the public that someone in the position of Director of Finance can have such an erroneous understanding of basic governmental accounting terms. Mayor Gronbach is not the only voice in the Milford government. He is the mayor, and as such, is restricted in what he can and cannot do when it comes to spending town funds. He has already made a number of rash judgments and committed a number of rash acts during his tenure. This latest attempt to redefine appropriation and do an end run around our charter to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars without proper taxpayer or representative approval is particularly egregious. The mayor did not put any appropriation requests for refurbishment of John Pettibone's school in the current year's budget. The mayor failed to provide the five-year capital budget required by our Charter Section six oh two E with any plans for capital expenditures at Pettibone. Nor were there any estimates of the cost of such projects submitted by each department, office, board, commission, or agency by February first, as required by Charter Section seven oh four D. Frankly, he failed to do this for the bike path capital project also, but at least that appropriation request was sent through the proper channels for approval. Per Charter Sections four oh five and seven oh four, the town council has no authority to appropriate funds, only to recommend appropriations to the Board of Finance. The council may overrule the Board of Finance only by a two-third majority of the entire town council. And that is one more than the five that you believe you have in your pocket. Per Charter Section seven oh eight, even emergency appropriations have to be approved by the Board of Finance. But the mayor knows all this already, because you did send the request for the appropriation of landfill settlement fund money for the bike path to the Board of Finance for approval. He's just afraid that the Board of Finance won't approve his Pettibone skullduggery, and he is trying to short circuit the process. Charter Section seven seventy-nine concerning the landfill settlement fund states, appropriation made in accordance with law. Appropriation made in accordance with law. Anything else is illegal. I will remind the mayor and the town council members of their personal legal exposure found in Charter Section seven ten. Every payment made in violation of the provision of this charter shall be deemed illegal. And every official willfully authorizing or knowingly taking part therein shall be jointly and severally liable to the town for the full amount so paid or received. Are council members willing to risk this kind of legal exposure simply because the mayor is afraid to put his half-baked request in front of the Board of Finance? When discussing possible charter revision, the mayor expressed his desire that the Board of Finance be eliminated. Now he's trying to eliminate it by fiat. In an earlier town council meeting, he claimed he would not wait for permission to spend town money on Pettibone's school refurbishing. You will wait, Mr. Mayor, as a mandamus action will be filed to force you to follow our town charter, no matter how much you wish to circumvent it for your clandestine pet projects. Thank you.
Well, at least he didn't have to hear about no Panda anymore, right? He actually covered a lot of the bases that I was gonna cover, because I'm actually here today. Joseph P. Gregorio, eighteen Cobbler Lane, and a resident. And I'm glad to hear, Mr. Mayor, I gotta say, as a resident, that you're thinking of doing, putting together a committee to explore possible actions for the Century Enterprise Center. If you want someone who opposed it to be on the committee, who's also a member of the Board of Finance, I'm happy to work with you to try to come to some sort of an arrangement that will satisfy everyone in the town's needs. We have a lot of data. I personally have done an exorbitant amount of research about the site and about the history of it, what the uses were, I would love to be able to help you out, as much as I possibly can. Michael covered so many things that I was gonna say. Obviously, I'm here to speak about W. V. Palmer's white papers. My biggest question, you know, to the board and to the mayor is, you know, how, who came up with this opinion that he's talking about in the white paper that, that he has the ability as a fiduciary to, or a treasurer of these funds, to take, to appropriate the funds without Board of Finance approval, when it specifically says so in the charter? Now, I actually have a legal opinion attached here in addition to the white papers, and a formal request for, you know, in paper electronic format, whatever works best, from the beginning of Director of Finance, W. V. Palmer's employ, any and all documents associated with such transactions as outlined in the white papers, including but not limited to all appropriations and expenditures from the landfill settlement trust, all appropriations and expenditures from the contingent fund, all appropriations from any other account, special fund, or otherwise that was not specifically budgeted for in the town budget for the fiscal year and the appropriation was made, as well as all expenditures and commitments from contracts, bills, work orders, and otherwise that caused appropriations or payments outside or exceeding the department budgets for the fiscal year, and all the supporting documentation, including dates, signatures, copies of invoices, for set expenditures and commitments. And I would, I'd like to submit this to the secretary for the minutes, if you wouldn't mind passing that down, because I really fear that something has gone awry. You know, for, even for that statement to come out, something is amiss. And I'm really worried that maybe that there's something that hasn't gone to the Board of Finance that really needs to be brought over. So if you could, before the next finance meeting, get that to myself as well as the other members of the board, that would be spectacular.
Can you submit that to us? I mean, the secretary's gonna maintain that. You wanna email it or something, or?
Yeah, absolutely, I'll email it in, but I figured a hard copy would suffice, no? If you need me to sign it, I could sign it if you like.
No, just email it in.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know that this would appear on the agenda, and I am a little confused about what it means. But it was voted on, so I'll address the two things it might have meant. but it was voted on, so I'll address the two things it might have meant. A plaque on the town flagpole honoring Peter Orinsky. I was very fond of him, I really could say I loved him, many people did. I'm not sure what the town flagpole is, if that is the town hall flagpole that displays the town flag. I think that would be nice since he was so involved with the town flag. However, what, I'm not sure if you meant the big flag that is on the south end of the green on Bridge Street. And that flag was placed and honors those from this town who died in World War II. And to place a plaque honoring Peter there and distracting the attention of whoever might be reading it from the sacrifice of those who died in the service of our country, and I don't need to explain what World War II was, and to distract any attention from their loss onto Peter, I don't think is appropriate. And I really know that he would not approve, because he was always putting veterans first and had a great deal of respect for those who had paid what we call the ultimate sacrifice. So, like I said, I'm not sure if you're talking about the town hall flagpole or the other one.
As long as it doesn't conflict with anything else there, it would be the town hall flag.
Okay, because it was unclear from the agenda. So, that's it.
We wouldn't have dueling plaques or anything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right, fair enough, I'll have to see an emotion.
I move in, Jerry.
On favor?
Get retired.
Thank you, everybody.